Good morning, good morning everyone. And welcome to our extraordinary meeting for the 16th of April. This is to consider the next steps on our speed management plan. Please join me in standing for an opening karaoke. Thank you very much. We have a few people, a couple of people on Zoom, councillor Gough and maybe later councillor, oh there you go James, councillor Harrison Hunt. So that's all cool, I need to move those.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, so I'll move those. Councillor Kotah will second it. All those in favour? Thank you. Right, I have received no declarations of interest, so we'll move on to our deputations by appointment regarding item five, this draft safer speed plan decision-making process. To kick things off, we will, I'd like to first ask Fiona Bennetts to come up. Now Fiona's, everyone's got five minutes, but Fiona is talking, using up Simon Kingham's submission because he's unable to be here, so you have the luxury of 10 minutes.
Hello, can you hear me okay? Maudena Kotah, I'm quite quiet, aren't I? Yeah. Kingham's a bit later because he's currently flying to Wellington, but hopefully he can answer questions over the phone. So just speaking on behalf of myself right now. Maudena Kotah and I am Fiona Bennetts, I live in Herewood, as you've all heard a million times. Please vote for option one, continue with the standard hearings process and with full council. I'm going to highlight six points. Number one, proceeding with the hearings, decision and implementation as soon as possible is in the best interest of residents as it aligns with the council's strategic priorities, policies and goals. Number two, the science behind slower speed limits has not changed. Any replacement rule may make it harder for road controlling authorities to implement the plans we have already consulted on, costing more money in the long run. Example, implementing variable speed limit signs instead of permanent speed limit signs have a huge cost and having to reconsult and have wholesale changes will have a huge cost as well. Number three, contrary to popular belief, speed limit reductions reduce vehicle emissions by smoothing out travel speeds as well as enabling people to feel safer walking, cycling, scooting and other forms of active transport. The sooner and more widespread the speed limits are reduced, the sooner drivers will start to adjust their driving behaviour, saving fuel and having transport options. Number four, consistency is key. That's why the whole city is drafted to eventually have reduced speed limits on local roads rather than just some suburbs or just outside schools in Midai. If we don't proceed with the hearings and implementation, the variety and patchwork of slow speed neighbourhoods in the city will continue to confuse and irritate drivers, leading to low compliance. I witness this every day when cycling or catching the bus down roads like Columbo Street. Number five, the new government believes that faster travel speed times will positively impact the economy. But I believe faster speeds will increase the number of crashes, deaths and serious injuries, which will overall have a detrimental impact on the economy. Reminder that 4.10.3 in your agenda, RCA's retain the ability to target harm reduction through safety management, including speed management plans and infrastructure improvements. Number six, some parts of the city, like where I live in the North West or where my friends live in the North East, have very little cycling infrastructure. While separated cycleways are ideal and hopefully all corners of the city will have equitable access to cycleways in the future, safer speeds are a fast and effective way to make many streets safer for the interested but concerned cyclists right now. Please vote for option one. Thank you, I'm here to take questions.
Okay, thank you very much. No, now, sorry, Tim?
When you mentioned about faster speeds and injuries, we're not increasing any speeds over the norm. Just to clarify, we're looking at slower speeds, so we're not actually increasing any, are we?
No, but the new rule could reverse some other changes that have already been made.
Yeah, yeah, so just yeah.
Okay, so Fiona, I'm just a wee bit confused. Are you doing Simon's or do you think he's going to probably be here on Zoom perhaps?
Well, he's scheduled for later, so I'm hoping to do his bit then so that I can put him on the phone so he can answer questions because he's currently unable to answer questions.
Okay, no, fair enough, okay. So we've got any more questions for Fiona, please? Thank you very much and we'll see you later on. Okay, so now is David here, please? Thank you David, good to see you.
Maudena, thank you for letting me be here. My name's David McCormick and I am a rate payer of Hawesville, just at the bottom of Kennedy's Bush. So yeah, thank you for letting me be here to talk. I'm here to ask you to continue or disagree with the council officers' report in saying, go with option three, I believe it was, and I would like you to consider option one. Continue with the process that you have already done, the hard work, great work that council staff have already done to do with consultation, the work that yours elected members have already done with the previous consultation and then also all of the hard work that rate payers have done in giving feedback to the consultation. I ask for that because central government is currently asking us, or you as in local government, rate payers to, or councils to stop continuing with the previously publicly engaged works, works to do with the setting of speed limits rule and wait until they come out with a new change. So yes, I ask for you to continue with the process that has already been completed and not wait for a rule change from the new government that has come in. As part of that rule change, they're looking to not make it mandatory for local RCA's to have a speed management plan. A speed management plan provides strategic direction for speeds over the next 10 years, similarly to what you, or councils have as a long-term plan or something like a regional land transport plan. It is just a strategic document that sets out the next 10 years. It doesn't specifically say this is what we're going to do tomorrow. It just shows and provides strategic content to council offices. For me, slower speeds in the right areas, roads and everything provides transport equity. That is a big one for me, that it is allowing people to have the choice between whether it's public transport on, by bicycle, by car. It just allows people to make choices instead of one option being a lot better than the others, which previously it's always been in motor vehicles. I'd like to, yeah, continue with the great work that council has been doing and continue with trying to increase transport equity that has been happening. If it is done right, which currently in my thoughts it has been done right, it is not going to actually increase travel times for car users. It's just going to allow them to choose to use other modes of transport. To touch on one of the points just previously discussed, that yes, the new government is looking to have speeds increase the GDP, whereas we all know that congestion at its worst is during peak times, which is the morning commute and the evening commute, where most of us are doing no work, not contributing to the GDP. So it's not actually done with all the speeds then are not going to be impacted significantly. They are already slow, you're already stopped and not doing work unless you're on your phone. I also like the idea of the slower speeds to allow that transport equity to continue with the CCC's emission targets that we have set out for being halved by 2030 as well as carbon zero by 2024. It also aligns with all the other council strategic policies, whether it be the CCC tree plan to try and increase the amount of trees or the Auto Tahi Christchurch Climate Reliant Resilience Strategy. All of those are good strategies that we're working towards making our home a better place and more climate resistant. Any questions?
Yep, well you've got one and a half minutes. Has anyone got any questions? No, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And go into the trouble. Okay, Bronte, please, welcome.
Maudena, I am Bronte, I am a resident of Cashmere and I am here this morning in front of the elected council and board members to discuss the future towards the safer speeds decision-making process. I personally encourage you to pause the said hearing until you have further guidance from the government that will be in term in setting and amending rules relating to transport, which will be effective for the next three years at a minimum. The current transport, Minister of Transport has, as we've noticed, but forward the intentions to replace the setting of speed limit rules 2022, which funny enough is why I'm here today because for that to happen, there needs to be a hearing consideration before anything is passed and implemented. Therefore, with the said guidance you received from the past government and NZTA when drafting safer speeds, it is with general respect that you give the same attention to the current government and the rules they had put forward. The transport programme for the Christchurch City Council relies heavily not only on the city rate payers for funding, but a key stakeholder for funding also comes from central government. And any changes of government policy that are then followed by the council could create the risk of changes in funding priorities. And in a time of financial struggles for some, and it is already in the eye of council, it comes, you know, I think the council should have the time to think and pause the decision-making process and, sorry, pardon me. Therefore, as the government is recommended, I also encourage you representing the city of Christchurch on the council to wait until the new government can consider any rules before making a final decision and taking your next step with this project. Thank you.
Brilliant. Thank you, yeah, thank you for making the effort to come in. Any questions?
First time here.
Sarah, please.
Kiara, thank you for that. The minister's direction seems like it's going to be to make sure that we take into account the economic analysis at the same time as the community voices and road users' voices.
Yes.
So would you be in favour of us anticipating that direction? So we know that that's what the rule's going to be and maybe at the same time as hearing from our community, which we've already got set up, actually getting an economic analysis done now and not wait until the minister's done it, so actually anticipating the minister's direction?
If we understand what they reckon and if it would, you're going on the aspect that they will pass it, then I understand going forward.
Yeah.
Now and saving time.
Yeah.
However, if, like for example, it might not be passed forward, then is it gonna,
Yeah.
is it going to be worthwhile just waiting to see that it's definitely going?
But if the minister's not going to do that, then we should just go ahead anyway, right?
And have the hearing to discuss.
Yeah, yeah, so go ahead with hearing, but maybe do the economic analysis as well.
Yes, but you want to understand that you're not just jumping forward and.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Tim, please.
What if we went ahead and kept focus on the safe speeds around schools? Because as you know, in Cashmere, we've got issues with Beckenham, with Tennyson Street. We had to put the cushions in because people were not slowing down. St Martin's School was the same issue. Thorington on St Taurus Road is appalling, even though it's a pedestrian crossing. Would you be okay, would you think that that would be a logical thing to do to ensure the safest speeds around schools?
Yes, I definitely believe schools are a priority. As a teacher myself, I think it is vital that school zones are looked at first. That is where your young children are. I also, I don't know if this is the place to say it, but I also recommend a blanket school speed signs. At the moment, it is so confusing driving in Cashmere. I have three different signs coming off three different streets for the same high school.
Yeah.
I think, and if I go to a different part of the city, different signs, different times. I think a blanket school variable sign for school zones, I would encourage that.
And we are definitely looking at that because that is, yes, the priority is the safety for schools.
Yeah, I have sent a different email for that, but no, it's not for this, but I would like clarity because.
Well, I'm your councillor, so blame me.
Yeah, okay, on a term, no, yes, I encourage school zones to be set because.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. John, from Transportation Group New Zealand, please. Kiara.
I've come to weigh in on the question of whether to pause or not. As the Chair of Transportation Group and also as a resident of Cheviot Street in Sprayden, right near Christchurch South Intermediate School, and having heard the previous submitter, I share that sentiment but do caution that children who are going to school don't just walk right in front of the school, they use streets all around and they may make journeys up to a kilometre away or more. So the term blanket speed reductions is a political football. And it was one of the points of Transportation Group. So basically what we did is we have 1,200 members and we canvassed those members via internet poll and got the biggest response of any poll that we've ever run to the government policy statement, which includes reference to blanket speed limit reductions. We then interviewed five riding managers from councils in the Wellington region face to face and we convened meetings with Institute of Transport Engineers, local representatives in New Zealand and prepared a joint submission, which I then presented in person to the minister. The topic of speed limits wasn't mentioned in the in-person meeting with the minister because I already know where he stands on that. But we did in our submission write that the term blanket is inaccurate. And using Christchurch South Intermediate as an example, it isn't blanket if it isn't every street. And the, what this council has done, I think, is the right thing in that major streets are still at 50. These are streets which have higher traffic volumes, they're wider, they don't feel slow, but they may have schools on them. So that's where we have the time-based speed reductions and it makes sense. It should, notwithstanding that you're going to have a lot more signs, it still does make more sense to have those major streets at 50 k an hour. But what happens is that the media doesn't pick up on that distinction. And the political reality is that it's termed a blanket, even if it's not a blanket speed limit reduction. So it is, as our submission, which I can make available to any of you, points out, speed limit reductions are one of the quickest, cheapest things we can do to achieve road safety benefits. So I encourage the council to continue with this and not wait for what we already know is going to come out from the government, which is the changes to the speed limit rule. So let's get them on the ground, people get used to them. My colleague Glenn Currie has done an analysis of it in Christchurch, which we also referenced in our submission and that shows how successful it has been to simply change the signs, even if we don't get around to doing the other things. Questions?
Okay, Tim, then Aaron?
You talked about major streets, so are you saying in front of schools they should remain at 50 k's?
Outside of school hours.
Outside of school hours, so just, okay, yep.
Okay, Aaron, please.
Yeah, who is Transportation Group New Zealand, John?
So there are two main groups in New Zealand that represent transport engineers and planners and that's TRAFINS, which was formed 75 years ago, and Transportation Group, which was also formed roughly 75 years ago. So the distinction is TRAFINS had its roots in local authorities and Transportation Group had its roots in the consultancies that serve those local authorities. The distinction is now kind of a little bit lost, but we do represent most of the transport planners and engineers in New Zealand. Planners and engineers, yes. When you say operators.
When it's called Transportation Group, I thought you might have been representing like trucks and buses and that kind of thing.
Yeah, road design.
Designers, not users.
Yeah, not, not the truckers.
Thank you, very clear. Thank you very much for your submission.
Anything else?
You've got 24 seconds and, oh yeah, okay.
Just one of the things is around the economic analysis and are you aware of research that's being done on the economic costs or benefits of slower speeds in urban areas?
I am, and in fact, that will stand up. So we're okay with the ministers pointing out to speed limit reductions because if you do the economic analysis, it will stand up.
Thank you very much. Okay, go. There's Shane here, please, welcome. There's Shane here, please. Welcome.
Morina, thank you for your time and attention today and throughout this entire contentious process. I'm cognizant of having two American accents together. I'm sure that's just a coincidence, but let you draw your own conclusions from that. That being said, in full disclosure, I am a member of the Transportation Group, but John and I have not done any coordination in this to this point. I speak as a rate-paying resident of Beckenham, as a driver, occasional passenger, runner, cyclist, dog walker, pram pusher and father of a four-year-old daughter and a four-month-old son. Based on all these interactions, I am very passionate about the need for road safety. I also have more than 22 years' experience as a transport engineer, the last three plus in an RCA capacity. So I have more than a layman's understanding of the evidence considered in and the processes behind setting speed limits, not to mention the fraught conversations we've all been having over the last year plus. While I have the utmost respect for the council staff who signed off on the report before you today, I do have to disagree with the recommendation and strongly urge you to consider option one. This option would allow for continuation of the local consultation process, which underlies a safer speed plan, to reach its necessary conclusion. Setting appropriate speed limits generally aligns with most of the strategic priorities for this council term: putting people at the centre of development, reducing emissions, and balancing the needs of today's transport network users with future generations like my son and daughter. But making the safer speed plan consultation process, taking it through the hearings, does this as well. Making the best use of ratepayers' money that's already been expended on the consultation and building trust and confidence in council that when we are asked for our opinion as residents on how our streets should look and perform, you will listen to it instead of waiting for instructions from Wellington. Local councils have invested with the obligation and the right to set speed limits, going back to the original setting of speed limits rule 2003 and section 22AB of the Land Transport Act 1998. I quote, "A road-controlling authority may make any bylaw that it thinks fit for the safety of the public or the better preservation of any road, fixing the maximum speed of vehicles or specified classes of vehicles on that road." Community boards and council decide speed limits that are in the best interests of our local community. This is not and has historically not been blanket speed limit setting, and it has not been overreached from Wellington. It also follows the principle that social and political issues are best dealt with at the most immediate local level rather than centralised decision-making. I understand the minister has provided recommendations that council avoid any changes to speed limits until he can replace the current setting of speed limits rule. I note that previous updates to the rule have not been retroactive. That is, to my understanding, there has not been a requirement that existing speed limits be reevaluated. So there's not much chance of a rework out of any future instructions. By continuing our local hearing process, the council will ensure that the fair democratic process that it has begun is brought to a fair and reasonable conclusion. This does not predetermine any outcome for the hearing, and the hearing panel will also be able to consider the minister's view in the ultimate decision. This may or may not result in a change in the outcome for specific speed limits as you've been considering them, but that's not the primary issue today. Today, we're talking whether council is able to keep faith with its community in terms of taking into account our views through a complete hearings process. There's no question that there's been a change in government and that a change in policy direction is a result coming from them. The voters determined this in November. However, changes in Wellington do not mean that the views and decisions that have always been made in Christchurch are now subservient to Wellington ministries. I urge you to reconsider the recommendations in the report and give option one more consideration. Again, thank you for your time. Any questions?
Tim?
Yeah, thank you, Megan. Have you noticed the behaviour in the Beckenham, especially Birdwood Ave, with regards to the slow speeds there?
I've noticed a lot of commentary on Facebook.
Yeah.
Because this is a role that, sorry, my role is very central to this and I have a great appreciation for it. I drive the speed limit with Beckenham. And I find very, very few instances where people are aggressively struggling to deal behind me. So, and as well, just walking on the street with my daughter and son, I have noticed speed limits have dropped. And I think we know from the evidence on this, you drop the speed limits and you don't put police cars in every corner and you don't put traffic cameras out. Not everybody's gonna drive the speed limit, but the average speed drops considerably. And we're talking about the average speed limits impacts on crashes.
But it also allows the police the power to issue tickets from that 40 or 30ks rather than the 50, which they're doing 60 or 70. Yeah. Cool. Thank you very much. Cheers.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm running out of time. Yeah, thank you. Shane, that was very good. Okay, so we've got Harrison, Em Grace and Jack. We've got three? From Greater Orta Tahi.
Yeah, there's actually only two of us today. Em had a conflict of timing with another consultation.
That is fine.
Right. Kiara, everyone. So I'm Jack and this is Harrison. So we're here on behalf of Greater Orta Tahi. So we want to enable accessible conversation and non-partisan advocacy for housing choice, modal choice, access to amenities, vibrant city centre and for today, safe streets. So we just want to talk on how there's been a lengthy consultation process with round one and round two that's gone to the hearings panel with 1,300 individuals who have submitted. And we believe that it would be in bad faith to go ahead and pause this now.
So we're recommending option one as the intended option for council. Quite interestingly, and I assume you've all done your homework on this and read the report, if you look at section six, 6.1 outlines clearly that the invested time and energy of the consultation process undertaken by residents is an important thing to consider in your responsibility to engage with your community. And that is, for example, if the hearing panel was cancelled as per option three, that prevents significant risk to the confidence that the residents of the city may have in the decision-making ability of council. We think that's a very important point to take under the belt today. You'll hear from many about the benefits of safer speeds, and we don't dispute the science on that, the science is clear. But that the council and councils by extension, we see you as representatives of the city, but democracy doesn't end at the ballot box. It ends, largely ends here. And that by definition, anything brought to hearing panels as well is a form of active democracy rather than a form of passive democracy. And we think that's a great thing in this city. We're also very wary that the letter received that's attached to this report indicates it's an intention of the minister to change the rule. It might be the minister's intent. But legally, intention has no current say over the rule. The rule would have to be changed. And without a firm timeline on that, we don't believe it's really responsible to put the hearing panel off for possibly six to eight months while we wait for Wellington to decide on what they want. It is, I do appreciate it's a bit of a pickle to put yourselves in, but it's not one you haven't been in before. And you seem to have navigated that quite well so far. So we are really looking for council to take a degree of almost autonomy and a bit of leadership in this and say, we'll look at this and we want to hear the voices of the people of the city. And then if, say, we get to the point where the rule is changed and it's no longer in line, at that point, the decision can be made, but it should be made with a full report in council's hands about what the residents of the city want, rather than having a half-done consultation process. And so that's our position on this really, is that there is already a consultation process underway. As Jack said, the previous round had 1,300 submitters with over 2,000 individual points requests and other amendments suggested from those submissions. So it's clear that this is not a quiet issue in the city and it's one that the residents clearly have an investment in talking about. So that's our point. Questions?
Tim, again.
So, I'm just filling out the day. So if we went and followed option one and there was a very clear message, and as you pointed out, active democracy is when people come and take part in these hearings. And it's a very clear picture from the people of Christchurch that they actually don't support the slower speeds. You'd respect that, as we should?
I think it should be absolutely taken into consideration. The voice of the people, combined with the recommendations of your staff and the evidence around safer speeds, should all be things that are taken into account in any final decision. So if it did come back that the people of the city didn't approve, we think that's absolutely something that should be taken into account. It's active democracy at that point.
Thank you.
Andrew?
Thank you. If there's a hearings panel and then the rules change, will we then probably need to do another hearings panel? Presumably, residents will want to be able to have their say knowing what the rules are.
It's a fair point. I don't necessarily think so. The report is not binding on council to necessarily, it would be a, from what I understand, it's just basically a grouping of thoughts and suggestions. And so it's not necessarily binding. And I would believe that any kind of rule coming from the government could be easily adapted to the needs of the city through that. It's just more about getting that information in front of you when that decision is made.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you. Simon was next, but I'll do Jonny now, if that's all right? And we'll just see how things are progressing. Is that right, Fiona?
Yes, Simon's available now, but...
Oh, sorry, is he? Okay, sorry, he was on the list. Sorry, Jonny.
I'll come back. Just calling in, so, yes, imagine I'm a slightly older, slightly greyer, British accent speaking.
Mental picture.
Simon, you've all met Simon before. Simon, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, right. Hopefully, you've received the link to Simon's speaking notes, which have been sent through. Cool. So he says, "Apologies for not being able to attend this meeting in person as I am on the way to Wellington." He's currently on the bus, I believe, "for meetings in his government role. I have a few points that support my conclusion that we should not pause the hearings panel process and should continue processing, progressing the safe speed plan, Christchurch's speed management plan." He has six points as well. Number one, the Minister of Transport has stated that he will reverse speed limit reductions where it is safe to do so. "I cannot see a case where an urban speed limit of 50km/h will ever be safer than 30km/h based on the basic physics that a person has an approximately 90% chance of dying when hit by a vehicle travelling at 50 compared to a 10% chance of dying when travelling at 30. I can see why this could possibly apply on state highways, comparing, for example, 110km/h to 100km/h with median barrier separation, but not for 50 versus 30 speed limits. Number two, the Transport Minister has also stated that economic impacts, including travel times and the views of road users and local communities, are taken into account alongside safety." CCC's Safe Speed Neighbourhoods work has already demonstrated strong public support. Number three, time savings for 50km/h versus 30km/h are in reality negligible in urban areas. Work by Auckland Transport identified that, on average, 14-19 minute journeys reduce speed limits around schools added, on average, 13-15 seconds. Number four, the minister refers to blanket speed limit reductions. CCC is not pursuing a policy of blanket speed limits, rather lower speed limits in targeted, quiet residential streets and near schools, etc. Number five, the Minister of Transport has identified that, under his new setting of speed limits rule, the government would require road-controlling authorities, such as CCC, to undertake cost-benefit analysis. BCRs for lower urban speed limits are likely to be significant. Data from Auckland shows BCRs of near 10 with more areas with lower speed limits. So this is likely to be an easy hurdle to get over. Number six, there is no clear indication when the new setting of speed limits rule will be implemented. How long do we wait for something that is unlikely to change what we are doing anyway? To conclude, Simon fully supports option one. Continue with the standard hearings panel process with full council. Let's not delay progressing a good policy that has wide local public support for a new policy that is likely to be consistent with Christchurch's approach to safer speeds and what Christchurch is already doing. Thank you, Simon. And Simon's available to take questions.
Tim?
Surprise. John from Transport Group New Zealand mentioned with schools on major or main roads or more significant roads to having a time of slow speeds rather than a blanket of slow speeds. I'm just wondering what Simon's thoughts are on that.
Did you hear that? Okay.
I didn't. I could hear it was Tim, but I couldn't quite hear it. Can you just repeat it?
Simon, with regards to what John brought up from Transport Group New Zealand, so if a school on a more main road or a major road to have a variable speed, so the morning and afternoon, you have 30ks for when the students are arriving or being dropped off, and then the rest of the day or after four o'clock, whatever that time may be, so prior to, say, eight o'clock or 7.30, and after four o'clock, that road reverts back to 50ks or whatever it is, your thoughts on that, please?
Yeah, I did hear that. Thanks, Tim. I think it assumes that people don't walk at other times, and of course, people do walk at other times. So variable speed limits around schools, I understand the logic behind them. But of course, older people, other vulnerable communities, kids still want to walk at other times. We want kids walking safely on the streets. And the second thing about variable speed limits, of course, they're incredibly expensive to implement because you do need some sort of expensive signage, and it's much more straightforward just to have straightforward signage. So I think variable speed limits, I understand where the minister's coming from in his comments, but I think when you think through the logic and the practicalities, they're not a very sensible idea, really.
Thank you, Simon. Cheers.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. Thank you, Fiona and Simon. That worked very well. Thank you. Thank you. Good on you. Okay, so Jonny, please, mate. How are you?
Kiara, council, call Jonny O. I'm here with University of Canterbury's Climate Action Club and Extinction Rebellion and Climate Liberation Aotearoa. Like many others today, I'm asking that the members of the city council vote to continue with the standard hearings panel process with full council. Now, I get it. On its surface, a safer speeds plan seems to present a simple trade-off, more efficient road networks versus safer active transport. But I want to dive into the wider benefits of supporting option one and continuing the safer speeds process. Now, I'm a long-haired youth representing a fistful of climate action groups, so obviously, my first point is gonna be about the climate. A 2022 study showed that at inner-city speeds of 30km/h, emissions will be reduced. On its own, that's a pretty crucial piece of information to a council that's failing to meet its emissions targets. And as Simon said, it won't even shorten travel times. Now, a key part of safer speeds is actually in the name. It's safer. You've heard the stats, 90% chance of death at 50km/h, 10% at 30. I don't know about you all, but I would feel much safer knowing that I'm 80% less likely to die in a car crash at any given time. And I'm not alone. A recent Austrian study showed that lower speed limits encourage walking, biking and bus use while simultaneously reducing congestion. I know empty buses cause certain councillors a bit of chagrin, so here's a way of fixing that. And of course, for each car off the road, commutes are that little bit faster for people who do drive. The sooner we implement the current plan, the more of these benefits we'll see. That's why option one is the best option for our planet. I understand that for some of you, planetary catastrophe resulting in billions of deaths and whole-scale ecosystem collapse isn't exactly a motivating factor. So let's talk money. After only three years of reduced speed limit, Auckland saw an extra $10 million per year in benefits as congestion and crashes were reduced and people lived healthier, more active lifestyles. Furthermore, a recent review of 23 studies showed that improving safety and accessibility for bikes and pedestrians in a given area increases the financial success for nearby local businesses. Small business owners are key stakeholders in council decisions, with temporary works and changes putting them at risk. But this review shows that option one provides the most benefit to small businesses by getting the most positive outcome sooner. I'd like to point out, though, where these savings are coming from. It's not just from less wear and tear on the roads, it's from healthier, happier people. Implementing the current safer speeds plan faster will empower people to be fitter and feel better in a wealthier city. I've already talked about crashes, so I'll use air pollution to illustrate this. A 2022 study found that the social cost of air pollution in New Zealand is 15.6 billion. A 2022 study found that the social cost of air pollution in New Zealand is 15.6 billion dollars. If we scale down to Christchurch's population, that's still a billion dollars, enough to cover the long-term plan's first year of operational spending with room to spare. A University of Auckland researcher showed that children driven to school are exposed to 21% more harmful chemicals than those walking or biking. For each kid who gets safely, for each kid who gets to safely commute by foot or bike, that's one less asthmatic kid at the nurse's office. That's one less old person trapped in their apartment. And that's one less family mourning the loss of a loved one right before Christmas. This is what you'll be supporting with option one, safer, happier people. With that in mind, what do the people of Christchurch have to say about safer speeds? From your feedback on the safe speed neighbourhoods of 2,000 submissions, 550 supported safer speeds or asked for even lower speeds. Only 270 opposed. That's a quarter of submitters supporting safer speeds, 13% against. I'd also like to remind you that you made a promise to halve emissions by 2030. You might remember schoolkids occupying council two weeks back. The 72 long-term plan submissions, they handwrote, each and every one calling for you to keep that promise, your promise. I hope I've made it clear that option one is keeping this promise and safeguarding current and future generations from climate collapse. Now, the Minister for Transport may not care for safer speeds, but this isn't the beehive. The letter that prompted this decision isn't binding. In fact, it's a bizarre overstep in the separation of powers for a central government minister to demand that council complies with a rule that has not yet been written, especially when council is well-supported with going ahead with its project. What we are discussing today isn't about Labour or National, Greens or ACT. This is about the people of Ototahie Christchurch. And the people want safer speeds as fast as possible. Safer speeds are an integral part of a healthy and sustainable cities. Supporting option one will better the environment, economy and health of our city. And it will show the people of Ototahie that you care about our voice. Kia ora.
Even, even though we, we run out of time, Andre had his hand up well early into the piece. So if you want to, got a question bud?
Thank you. Uh, so presumably if we're doing a hearings panel, it would be after long-term plans, maybe July, maybe August. And my understanding is we're expecting to hear about the new rules by the end of the year. So if we were committing to a hearings panel by the end of the year, which would presumably fall around when we know the new rules, so people can make an informed, uh, submission to us via the hearings panel, wouldn't that potentially be the best of, best of all worlds here? But, because you're looking at it a couple of months difference and potentially a hearings panel based around rules which then change and then the, is there potentially a compromise to be found there that makes a lot of sense and still delivers in a timely manner?
I suppose my philosophy is the climate activist philosophy where we've got one or two years left total to save the planet. So when we're looking at it through, through that timeframe, two months is a significant amount of time. When we're talking about people dying, people's lives being on the line, I think two months is a reasonable amount of time to bring it forward.
Presumably you want to see changes that stick, not changes that then have to be ripped up later as well. So would, so doing a hearings panel, knowing the rules would potentially help get rules that stick, rather than having to be reversed, I guess is.
Yeah, I understand.
If you had to choose between doing it sooner or, you know, having rules that stick, it's a total hypothetical, I know, but.
Yeah, I understand. And unfortunately, I'm no expert in local government at this point. Um, so yeah, I've kind of said my piece. Um, but yeah, I appreciate that point. Thank you.
Thank you. And thankfully. Now, I'd just like to thank everyone for their deputations and the time you took doing it. Thank you very much. Okay. So now we'll go on to the, uh, item five, the staff reports. And who have we got? Gemma and Lynette?
Stephen.
Oh, Stephen.
Kia ora tato. Um, it's Gemma, Stephen and Lynette today. Um, I'll just give you a brief intro to this paper, but on the whole, we'll take the paper as read. So the draft safer speed plan has been consulted on last year. Um, and changes have been signalled by the current government to the land transport rule setting of speed limits. Uh, the minister has noted, uh, a change in focus to unlocking economic growth, increasing productivity and reducing congestion. And he indicates that the new rule will be, uh, will reverse, and he has indicated on a number of, um, communiques that the, the new rule will reverse blanket speed limit reductions. Um, the rule is planned to be in place later this year after consultation. But the reality is we will not know how, um, any changes will affect our work programme, or how they will be enacted and expected to be enacted until, basically until it comes out for consultation, we will get an idea then. Um, therefore, that's, that's why you've got the proposal before you today. What are we doing at the moment? Uh, just a really quick summary. Uh, there's been a lot of talk about the school speed limits. But, um, we are currently implementing the safer, safer, what, safe speed.
Safe speed neighbourhood.
Safe, but speed neighbourhood programme, which was built out of the last long-term plan. So that is, um, a number of areas around the city that have, um, communities have come to us and asked for lower speed limits in their communities. Um, and we are also looking at, um, the, uh, speed limits around schools. Now, there is a discussion around whether they are variable or fixed. So fixed all the time or vary throughout the day. There are real challenges within, um, implementing variable speed limits for schools, especially when you have a number of schools close together. Did you realise that schools start at different times of the day and finish at different times of the day? And so it can be very, very, it has been very, very challenging and the team are working through that at the moment. But we are working on those as we speak. We, out of this meeting, this meeting is about the process for the draft safer speed plan. Um, not that work, but that is ongoing, just so you're aware.
Okay. You all happy? Right, I've got two questions so far. There's Sarah and then Jake and then Yanni.
Uh, thanks so much for that. Um, we've had an indication of the direction that the minister would like to go in. Um, and we're doing most of that already. So the community views, road user views, they come through in the consultation. Um, but the economic analysis is the other key piece. Um, is it, do we have information already from previous studies and things that we've done? Or are we able to get that work done in time to inform our decision-making? To make any decision that we make, um, likely not to be sort of contested in things anyway. It just seems like that's the key sticking point is that minister's direction on economic analysis. Is there anything to stop us doing that?
There's nothing to start us doing it. Is that to stop us starting it? Sorry.
Yeah. Would it be possible, if we went ahead with the hearings panels or option one, would it be possible to get that work done, um, in time to inform our decision-making, which is the direction that the minister's heading in anyway?
It, it is part of the direction the minister's head, minister has signaled. And we, we really don't know what the minister's direction will be until after we get that rule.
Yeah.
Um, we can do it and we can start it. But until we, um, commission the work, we don't know what the timeframes will be. So I, I couldn't guarantee anything today.
Yeah. Um, tomorrow's finance and performance meeting has a section in it, um, on deaths and serious injuries on our roads.
Yes.
And it says that at this stage in the financial year, we've already had six deaths and 80 serious injury crashes.
Yes.
When you look at that proportionately, that means that, and we, and we know that slower speeds reduce the risk of those things. Are we likely to see more deaths and serious injuries as a result of the delay?
Uh, the result of a delay.
A delay in slowing speeds.
Look, I, that's not something where your staff can sit here and answer today because I don't know what caused all of those deaths and serious injuries. But we have advised you back that, and you've heard from the submitters, that reducing speed limit does reduce the, um, impact of harm.
Yeah, thanks.
And just to add to that, we are partway through implementing what the council approved as part of the interim speed management plan, which was.
Which is safer speed neighbourhoods.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you. Um, Jake?
Thank you. Sorry. Um, thank you. So if we were to proceed with option one, um, is it your view that the director of land transport would likely approve, um, a speed management plan?
Um, the director of land transport, or Waka Katahi have indicated that they, they will continue approving it. But that doesn't mean that we wouldn't have to undo things if the rule changes. I don't know.
Yeah. Would you also say it's fair to say, um, it's not exactly clear, uh, in terms of what will or won't be reversed?
Yeah.
In terms of speed management plans? All we've had is a press release saying blankets reversal of.
Yeah.
Reversal of blanket speed changes.
That is correct.
Um, is it also true that we've sort of expended most of the resources on this project, on the speed management plan to date already?
Uh, the work that's been undertaken on the speed management plan to date has been staff time and resource, yeah.
And that most of, we're most of the way through the process is what I'm trying to understand from a cost perspective, staff resource perspective.
We, we've not done any implementation. So the expensive part is putting it in. Um, but we've done it. Um, we've, we've, uh, done some design and we've consulted on that proposal. So yeah, there's been a.
Cool.
A significant effort put in today.
And you've already clearly stated that obviously speed management plans do, uh, increase safety on, on, on the roads. Um.
Lower speed limits reduce the incidence of serious harm, the likelihood of instance of serious harm. The plan just gives us a plan to work to across the city.
Cool. Um, thank you.
Okay. While, while we're getting through this, I'm happy to move the staff recommendation and Sam's happy to second it. Uh, next question is Yanni, please.
Oh, thanks. Um, I just wanted to check on a couple of things. Um, in the report, I can't see what areas, like we've been given the areas that have already been done. And we're told that the ongoing engagement is for new areas that people have asked for. What, what are the areas that this is covering?
This is a, this is a citywide, this is a citywide proposal that has gone out. And we're talking about the process today for moving forward to the hearings panel, not the areas of the.
Right. Some of the, some of this have said, this is not a blanket speed thing. This is a targeted approach. What I'm trying to understand is what are the areas that are currently being targeted in this plan? And why is that not in the report?
That is not in the report because that is part of what would go to the hearings panel. So that is not what we are here to discuss today. What we're here to discuss, discuss today is the process moving forward and the implications of what the minister has said. Now, the minister has talked about blanket speed limits, but we have no definition on what that means, because the changes to the rule haven't come out yet.
Good answer. Thank you.
This is a high-level process that doesn't have any specific areas that we're proceeding with.
That is incorrect, councillor. So through the chair, that is incorrect. The process, this is a process to deal with the, the process that we've undertaken to consult on. The areas will be debated and discussed as part of the hearing.
Right. So just so we understand, people have been asked to put forward streets that, to identify?
Through, through the chair, sorry councillor, through the chair. This is about the process for that, that has been undertaken. It's not the detail of that.
Okay. That, that's, that's pretty clear answer, Yanni. Thank you.
Can I, can I check also with, um, in terms of the analysis of the deaths and the crashes? Do we get, um?
Uh, that, that's not what we're here to talk about. You're, you're getting into.
No, because we've heard about safety and the impact that this has on making the city safer. And I'm just trying to understand how we do the analysis around the, the statistics that we have and the causes versus the safety in terms of lowering speed.
Through you, Mr Chair. I think it's unfair to ask those questions without the prior question to staff. How can they answer their questions on the blind without that information?
I'm, I'm just talking about the process, not about.
Again, that will be, that will be dealt with through the hearings panel process because that is the detail of.
Yep. Thank, thank you.
A work that is, that, that is going to be heard.
Thank you. Andre, please.
Thank you. Can you talk a bit about the, what timelines of hearings panels would be if it was going ahead? Uh, presumably after long-term plan, presumably it takes a month. What's the?
Yes. So, um, the people that I asked that question of have all disappeared out of the room this morning. However, they did advise it would be after long-term plan before we could, um, convene a hearing panel. And as you will see in the report, we've recommended, um, that it's a, a panel of the whole, a committee of the whole, and, um, a panel, a hearings panel of the whole of council. Sorry. Um, so it would be, well, it would be after LTP, which is, doesn't start till July, finished till July. So it'd be July, August probably. I haven't got a date yet, but it would be later in the year.
Yeah. And then presumably it would take some time.
Well, we would be prepared once we got that because we've got time to.
Yeah.
Get organised for that. It'd take some time probably to work through. It could be a long hearings panel.
Yeah.
If we had a lot of, um, submitters, it could be three or four days of hearings, then deliberations and questions.
But we, we, so are we expecting to, to understand the new rules by the end of the year?
The minister has indicated that the new rule will be enforced by the end of the year. So we will have, um, we will have had, uh, consultation. We will have, I'm, I'm presuming that council will likely want to submit on any new rule. Um, so that would be through council. We will have submitted on it and then it will have been enacted.
Yeah. Okay. So enacted by the end of the year, but we should learn of.
We'd have a, we'd have an idea before then.
Yeah. So, okay. So we should learn about before then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we have an idea of what it's going to look like when it comes out for consultation.
Yeah. But, but going forward to hearings panel now would likely mean that we do the hearings panel, then find out the new rule, basically just as we've finished the hearings panel?
Around about the same time possibly.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Tim?
Yeah, thank you. I've, I've just got a couple. So people have commented the definite rules for hearings. So we won't have definite rules from the minister through until later this year.
Yeah, correct.
But if we progress with option one, would give us a, a good foundation to lead into that? Or is that not correct?
That, that's the decision that's sitting with you here today, is councillor.
It's a joyful one, isn't it? Yes. Um, so school, the safer speeds with, with schools is not going to be affected at all irrelevant of this. But what could be, um, from this is a discussion over, um, variable speed signs or.
Or fixed speed signs. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Um, um, in blanket speeds, uh, we're actually, someone, um, I think it was John that mentioned, it's actually not a blanket speed we're, we're actually after, is it? Or is, or is it?
Um, that again, we haven't had definition, the definitions from the minister about what blanket speed limits are. So until we get that clarity, we.
Which will be later in the year from the minister. Yep. Okay. Um, and the, the safer speed neighbourhoods aren't going to be affected by this decision either, is it? So you, you, we had comment with regards to Beckenham, we've got the safer speeds in those.
They are already under implementation, but I can't guarantee they won't be affected. But that would be something we would have to come back and talk to you about, should they be.
And again, we won't know that irrelevant of what it is that comes back from the minister.
And through the chair, sorry councillor, it would also be something that we would indicate to you at the time that we were doing that submission to the change, proposed change to the rule.
Okay. Um, and so, uh, nothing with regards to, um, other things that affect safety like U-turns in front of schools, which has been banned overseas for decades and decades. Waka Katahi and the governments never looked at. That's not included?
No, that's not included in this. This is just the rule around setting of speed limits.
Okay. And, and I, I know my colleagues have touched on it and I kind of, it's the other things that affect, um, uh, accidents and injuries like cell phone use and things like that, that's not being considered at all.
No.
Strict defiance, nothing like that. So it's purely just.
Setting a speed limits.
Thank you. Thank you. Tim, Mark, please?
Thank you. Um, I heard you mention earlier about undoing, um, speed changes if we put them in place. And that presumably would have cost implications on us as a council in undoing them?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Aaron?
Yeah, it was raised by a number of submitters that, um, slower speeds or the impact at slower speeds, um, you have more chance of survival.
Yep.
The science is pretty clear on that. Um, but, and so because we like to be evidence-based, do we get the numbers from the crash reports, um, from, uh, the police of the number of people killed or seriously injured on Christchurch roads every year when people are doing the speed limit? So not the excessive, do 120 in a 50K zone. You could make the speed limit 10. They're still going to do 120. Not those fatalities, but of people obeying the road rules. So not on their cell phone or doing whatever else, but not on drugs, just driving at 50K an hour. What's the fatality and serious injury rate of those crashes?
Again, that's not something we can answer today. It's not something.
Should we not collect that?
It, it is, it is in the information we get from the police database, but. It, it is, it is in the information we get from the police database, but it will be presented at the hea-. Well, it'll be presented at the hearing, that sort of information will be what's presented at the hearing.
Thank you, that's good, thank you, um, Victoria?
Oh, thank you, Mr Mayor, um, thank you Lyny, is there anything you've heard today from councillors and, um, presenters that? You didn't consider in making your recommendation? Or perhaps put another way, is there anything you've heard today that would change your recommendation to, to the table?
Uh, our recommendation, the options are, are on the report, um, that's for you to consider and, and make the decision.
Is there anything that's been raised today that you didn't consider in making that recommendation?
No, not to my knowledge.
Beauty, um, Jake?
Thanks Lyny, we've heard that the E C N P that we're, um, hoping to enact.
Yep.
Um, may well be compliant with the new rules anyway.
Maybe.
Um, and, you know, notwithstanding Sarah's point about an economic analysis that might help to wrap it up with a nice wee bow. Um, does that mean that by proceeding today, option one? We would be able to get, assuming it was compliant, a speed management plan in place quicker without delay?
Um, and it may and it may not, and I can't give you a better answer than that, I'm sorry, because. It does do, it does depend, look, if. The hearing would be done, so there would be one step that you wouldn't have to do in order to enact what was going.
So it was reasonable, it would be reasonable to assume that we could do it, we could get lower speeds in place quicker if we were, were to proceed?
Not, not, it depends on what the rule comes out with and that's the issue I've got and the team have got, is we just don't know what, what's going to come out of the rule.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, um, we, uh, Sam, please?
I think Jake's actually answered it, not my question.
Tim, again?
Thank you, I'm giving my money's worth, let's go. Um, so if we held a hearing, say, August, September, because we've got a kind of, staff do have to lick their wounds after the long term plan. And they're looking like the government's going to be, the minister will be doing something, about putting his information out with regards around September, October, somewhere around there. So what, if we held the hearing, we'd almost be. Tag teaming with the information coming out, so the information we had from the hearing.
Yep.
Would then be a real cl- clear idea of what the people of Christchurch wanted leading into the minister's direction. So it could actually be a good, good timing.
Um, but ye- yes.
Cool, thank you.
And lastly, Ca- don't, yeah, Kelly, and then Andre?
Uh, thanks Lyny, um, in your time in council, how often have you had to make decisions before? An imminent, uh, announcement by government on the particular area that you were concerned about?
Uh, we can only ever make decisions with the best information that we have at the time. This is, this report here has the best information that we have right at the time. And hence you've got it sitting with you to make a decision today.
It's a very good answer, thank you.
Uh, Andre, please?
I'm not quite sure how to ask the question, but the, the way I'm seeing this is there's nothing necessarily stopping us from committing to hearings panel by the end of the year.
No, no, nothing.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Aaron?
So, I, it's kind of a follow on from Kelly's question, you said that you worked with the best information you have at the time. And your staff recommendation is to hit pause based on that information at this point in time.
Until we know more what the rules.
Thank you, um.
Not sure.
Yanni, please?
Yeah, thanks, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, why are we having an extraordinary meeting to consider this? Why wasn't this considered as part of a normal council meeting?
There was a very significant chance that there would be a high volume of deputation requests, given that this consultation generated over a hundred submitters who wanted to be heard. So in anticipation of that and the timeframe in which those deputations could be considered, we had an extraordinary council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Katie. So, we've had no, we've done questions to death, uh, we've got a mover and a seconder. We have also actually got a foreshadowed motion, uh, so we're going to have ten minutes for a cup of tea and then we'll get back into debate when we come back, thank you.
Okay, so what we have got up there and the mover and seconder have agreed to the change, it's in yellow, we will now debate.
Yeah, well, debate question, what did you?
Because I didn't, that wasn't up before.
No, that's right.
And what, just the intention of it, is that an intention to have the hearings panel once the new government rules are out? Is it, and so if for any reason the government rule is delayed, what happens there?
You'd have to bring it back to council for a decision.
Okay.
But the minister, I mean, as you bear aware, the minister's been quite decisive quite early, so I would be, I would expect some rules out from him.
It just stops it being open-ended for people to think, oh, this will carry on till the middle of next year, we don't want that.
And then, if, so the hearings panel will be hearing submissions that have already been made on this work, so would, we need to go back and re-console with new rules?
Well, it'll be no different to if we proceeded with option one today and that we'll have to get proper advice on whether the hearings panel can take other information.
Proceeding today is different than...
No, it's not.
No, because what I'm, what I'm asking there is if this hearings panel proceeds in the yellow there, after the new rules come in.
Yeah.
That changes what submitters might have said during the process.
Correct.
Whereas proceeding today doesn't because the new rules are not in yet.
But the premise of your question would mean that once the new rules are out, we'd have to redo the whole hearings panel anyway.
No, no, because if you get certification, you don't, don't need to do that.
But that's the premise of your question.
That's, that's the reason why we put that in.
But I'm just asking about the validity of this and whether it is actually workable or whether...
Council staff have advised Andre and I that it is, yeah.
So whether you can have a hearings panel on a consultation after rules have changed and the recommendations have changed.
Or we can get the relevant person to the table, but I thought Andre came up with a very pragmatic solution. And council staff have said that it's an amendment, it's a resolution that's capable of being implemented.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Cool.
Thanks.
Right, so what we'll do is we'll, what's up there, we'll go into debate and everyone can go for their life, so who would like to kick off?
Sarah.
Kyurakoto, everyone here will know someone who's been in a car crash and most are lucky and walk away, but some are not. Too many people don't make it home and too many are seriously injured on our roads across the Motu and here in Otatahi Christchurch. As we see from tomorrow's Finance and Performance Committee meeting agenda, we've had six families grieving unnecessarily and eighty hugely impacted by suffering so far this financial year and likely more to come. In our last hearing on speed management around school speeds, we had many, many submissions asking for more streets to be made safe through slower speeds, and we had started a process of making our neighbourhoods safer prior to the Labour Government's direction because we were listening to our residents. Going here with option one now and listening to our communities now will listen to, will allow us to slow down neighbourhoods where there is good support, to take our community's views into account rather than the view of one person in Wellington. Some say it's a case of individual responsibility and if someone makes a mistake, it's their own fault if they get injured, but what of those injured or killed by others' mistakes? And what of those who had a chance to stop it and did nothing? We all need to play our part. I've been accused in the past of hiding behind the evidence, although I'm not quite sure what that really means or why using evidence in decision-making would be a bad thing, but I'm going to let the evidence presented by the deputies today speak for itself. Many of those around the table have in the past not taken views that not just go against the wishes of a minister, but against the law as they believe that it was in the best interests of our communities. Our communities are asking for safer streets and I'm keen to support them. There is no benefit in delaying the hearings panel when we know that that delay will result in other families grieving, and I'm not prepared to face families of those injured or killed and tell them that waiting for the minister to make up his mind was more important, and I don't know many who are. We owe it to all of those who use our streets, young and old and in between, to keep them safe, and I hope my colleagues agree.
Thank you very much.
Look, I think this is more about the process today than anything and, you know, inevitably you're always going to have tensions and changes when governments change. The government have come through and been quite clear in what they're looking at and are acting relatively quickly, I guess, on those rules, so I kind of look at it and go, actually, this is about just ensuring we're lining it up so that the people that are coming to that hearings panel actually have the ability to make an informed, you know, position. I appreciate, I've written submissions already, but I would like to think that we are able to take into account their views when they come along, knowing what the government have planned, so, look, you know, I don't think, and I appreciate Sarah's views on it, but I'm just sort of thinking in terms of this being a process thing today, it's not necessarily about people wanting people to die, I think that would be an unfortunate sort of position to put people in, this is about lining things up so that we can get a hearings panel that, you know, the people that are prepared to take time and engage in society or engage in our decision-making process have the absolute ability to be fully informed when they do it, so, look, I don't think this is about personal views or, you know, it's not necessarily helpful to personally attack people, it's more about this whole idea of just having a process that lines up based on, again, what the government have signaled. I just note in the minister's letter, he says, "I consider it as undesirable for RTCs and RCA's to apply public money and resources in developing speed management plans only to have to revisit the plans when the new rule takes effect. Given this, if you've not already finalised your speed management plan, I encourage you to consider the new rule before making the final decisions." And I just say that because I want to thank the council staff for coming along today, which on quite a contentious issue, but actually just giving us the option to consider that, and I hope that the council go, actually, let's line these things up this year. As we've heard, it doesn't affect the school zones, it doesn't affect the work that was signed off in July of last year, this is about ensuring alignment and obviously just acknowledging, I think, the work that Andre has done in terms of adding to the resolution, which signals to the community that we are still committed to having the hearings panel, but we want them to have as much information as possible before we proceed with that.
Thank you. Jake, please.
Thank you, I'll be supporting the foreshadowed mainly because we've heard in the staff advice that we can progress with our speed management plan, there's no barrier to sign off, and the current rules are in force. We know that we've expended most of the decision-making resources already and we've also heard that a speed management plan will keep people safe. And we've also, we also intuitively know that we can tweak and change the plan as much as we wish after we've heard from people and when we come to make a decision. What remains really unclear, actually, is what will happen in the future, and I don't think we should really be in a position of thinking that a reversal is a guarantee, I think a lot, there's a lot of water to go under the bridge when we think of how do you define a blanket speed management plan. So I think it's really easy to send out a press release saying you're going to reverse this, that and the other, but actually it's a lot trickier to do that, we're still the road, road controlling authority, we have a responsibility to the people of Christchurch to do that as we see fit and in a way that keeps them and their children safe. So I say let's go forth, hear from the people as they would expect, let's do our jobs, let's not cut this process off at the legs. The reality is, I don't want to die in a ditch over all aspects of this plan, if we get to hearings and we find out that actually the safety benefit in some places is marginal, but it's wildly unpopular, then, then, then we can take that time and consider that in an area-by-area way, but equally, I want to be able to get to the point where we can weigh up actually, safety versus value for money versus community support, but to cut this process off now would deny us the ability to do that, so with that, I encourage people to support the foreshadowed.
Okay, any, Melanie?
I fully support option one and going here with the hearings, we need to hear the voices of the submitters now and we shouldn't leave them hanging. The only reason anyone would want to pause or stop hearings is if they don't agree with implementing safer speeds, it's quite simple. Those opposed to safer speeds say good drivers are watching, who are watching the road are able to respond to pedestrians and cyclists, so they would never hit one. However, there are times when it may be impossible for a driver to avoid a pedestrian, that occurs, do we want them to have a 90% chance of survival or only 10%? Those opposed to safer speeds say the chances of a pedestrian or cyclist being hit by a car is very low, so why make a change? This attitude makes it clear they believe some deaths or injuries are so unlikely we shouldn't attempt to eliminate those chances either. Why bother, it's only a few kids. The economics argument is flawed, it's the connector or arterial routes to another suburb that are clogged at peak times. Slower speeds on residential streets barely make a change of any to travel times. Spredon's already 30 kilometres an hour on residential roads, and I have to admit, when I'm driving, I'm one of those rat-runners. I avoid busy Sparks Road and I take Simeon and Bletso Ave to get to Strickland Street. I can tell you that taking those streets at 30Ks rather than 50 doesn't make it any slower. I still end up waiting to get into the queue of traffic on Strickland Street no matter what, even if slower speeds were to take you another minute or more to get to your destination, isn't that time something you would hand over multiple times over in a heartbeat if you thought it might save a loved one's life? Why not pay that perceived time forward, pay it ahead of time to save someone's life in the future? And I'll tell you what really slows traffic down, car accidents. So let's be the leaders of this city who are not afraid to hear from the submitters before the government tries to stop us having autonomy over our own decisions. Let's vote for safer speeds, let's vote for fewer crashes, let's vote for waste, less wasted time dealing with insurance, let's vote for fewer and less severe injuries, let's vote to save lives, let's vote to do what's right for those who are vulnerable on our roads, let's vote for option one to proceed with the hearings. This is a once-in-a-lifetime chance to have safer speeds right throughout our city, waiting will mean we've lost our chance, let's be bold and brave and take it now.
Kelly?
Yeah, thanks, I mean, I'd like to take the drama out of the argument, it seems desperate to rush this through, to me it makes sense to wait, I'd like to hear from the government first, I don't see the need to rush it through. We've got an imminent decision coming from the government which will give us much greater clarity on this. I get contacted by a lot of residents who are confused by the different speeds around, and I'd like to see something that, you know, makes more sense, so I'm happy to wait.
Thank you. Tim?
Yeah, being a member of a family that know only too well the tragedy of a road accident and the continue living with it, I think that's an unfair discussion and argument to have. I have been an advocate for community slow speeds from the very start, as soon as I was elected, I was hounding Waka Tahai with regards to slow speeds in front of schools, although they fell short with regards to taking so much time, we're talking decades of putting this in, this has been a standard overseas, and then they pulled the plug and wouldn't look at U-turns, outlawing U-turns in front of schools, so that's still allowed, because at the end of the day, it is driver behaviour in front of schools and other areas, they drop their precious ones off and then they don't care about anyone else's, so it's about self-awareness and self-responsibility for others. I'm a great advocate and I love slow speeds, I see Beckenham and other areas, but I am aware that it takes time to get this right, so there are areas like Valley Road and others where there is confusion with the signage and different speeds, and our staff are working on that at the moment, and if we're looking at timing, our staff are coming out of the long-term plan, they will need time to lick their wounds because that is a mammoth task of communication with our people, and there will need to be a time for our staff to gather breath, so I don't see a major delay if we delay this now, and it may be four, as little as four weeks, it could be eight weeks, but we're not talking about a great length of time, but what we need is the information, the correct information for people when they come to us with this, and I think that is the key here, information, it's the inquisitive mind based on truth, and that's what we need with this hearings panel. As I said, my family know more than most about tragedy with regards to this, I am an advocate and always have been for slow speeds, and I take exception being told that if I vote one way or the other, I'm all for the, for danger on roads etc. I will be supporting the staff recommendation because I think that when it comes out, it must be done properly and done with the correct information and the truth. Thank you.
Okay, Mark?
Thank you. I concur with councillor Scandrit, my family very well knows the tragedy of losing loved ones, my parents were killed in a car crash 30 years ago, so to try and, you know, make me feel poor for making a decision that's really sensible and wise, and I'm certainly going to be supporting the staff recommendation here because wisdom says going where angels fear to tread in trying to preempt the rule is just lunacy, so I will certainly be supporting this option so that we can have all the, the time that we need to get this right, do it once, do it right. We heard from staff today about potentially having to undo changes should the rules come in as we expect, that to me, in a time when we're really struggling for economic viability around the council, to go and waste money by implementing and then having to undo it, that doesn't make any sense, so let's press the pause button, let's give the minister some time to give us definitive rule so we know where we're actually heading and we can get it right when we do proceed, so I'm all for hearing from the public and I'm all for, for making good decisions, but good decisions need to be based around what we know and what the rules say.
Thank you. Victoria?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Let's just be really clear, it's been said by councillor McDonald that today is not about the merits of safe speed, which is really a motive topic, you've heard, today is simply about the process and that's all, and we are proposing a process that lines up, and importantly, it doesn't affect the school zones that we've heard a lot about today. I want to thank those who have taken the time to come into the chamber and present to us today, have with the greatest respect, I think what we heard today was a very narrow glimpse of actually what the public sentiment is, and most presenters appear to have misunderstood what our decision-making is today, which is solely about the process. Thank you councillor Peters for referencing the financial constraints, we are in the middle of a long-term process, long-term plan process, we're repeatedly hearing from our residents about the financial pressure they're under and that they expect us to also show financial responsibility, and it's the resource used to implement the plan which is going to be the real cost here and not so much the decision-making itself. The two questions that I'm asking myself today in determining how to vote is, does it make sense to engage in a process when we don't have the full information? You've heard from councillor Peters about that, and the answer to that's got to be no, and is this the best use of our, of our ratepayer money? And surely the answer to that is also no. We're only talking about a couple of months, that's the reality, and I'm not prepared to pull money down the drain on that, and today my preference would be to adopt the more cautious approach, wait and see, and I think that that's the responsible thing to do.
Okay, Pauline?
Yeah, look, most of it's been said, so it won't take long, but to pause or not to pause, and pausing will slow down a process that we're well into, and, and I believe that we really need to respect the people who have come in and engaged in this process today, well over a thousand of them have spoken to us, and we do risk a bit of reputational risk if we pause this now, and it might be two months, it might be three, it might be four, we don't know what's going to happen at government level, they might be delayed for any reason, I don't know, we don't know how long that time is going to be. I say let's keep going, let's respect the people that have fed into this, and I believe that we can prove economic benefits through the work that we're doing here, and I also believe that we can get around a blanket approach, and those two things seem to be what the changes might hinge on, I don't think there's a big risk here in proceeding at all, and I'd really urge everyone to support the foreshadowed motion and support option one.
Celeste?
As local decision-makers, we all have a responsibility for making our streets safer for all residents in Ota Taha'i, so this plan and this process is a big part of it. We've already heard that the community wants us to continue with the process and we've already committed to it. We often hear about the importance of local decision-making, that's why sticking with the usual hearings panel process with the full council is not just about slower, safer streets, but it's also about supporting local democracy. We want our communities to trust us and this option allows us, foreshadowed option allows us to continue with this process and not let this council be dictated to by Wellington. The hearings panel allows us to further hear from our residents as they've asked us to and consult. Let's remember that slower, safer streets have another, a lot of other benefits, it's not just a smart move for safety, but we know that it's better for an economy and environment to, reduces pollution, congestion and protects all road users, users including kids walking to school. And just to be clear, we're not talking about slowing everyone down for no reason, these changes have been requested by many in our communities and they're backed by good evidence. Lowering speed limits in our neighbourhoods near schools is something we should all get behind and it's about protecting our kids and looking out for each other. Let's not put off making things better, delaying this plan only means waiting longer for the benefit it brings, delaying this until the minister makes up his mind undermines confidence in council processes. We've seen this before, arguments to continually delay decisions is simply another way of saying you don't want it to go ahead. We owe it to ourselves and future generations to act now for safety, to show leadership and to build confidence in local decision-making, so I ask you each to back the foreshadowed motion and stick with the usual hearings panel process with the full council, let's work together.
Okay, Rado, I think, Aaron then, Andre.
Yeah, the term safer speeds is a very emotive term and was used a lot here this morning, and it is good to get the evidence, and obviously someone being hit at different speeds has a different outcome or vehicles crashing at different speeds has different outcomes, and I sent a message through before to someone that works in road policing to find out the number of fatalities per year of people doing 50, in the 50K areas, abiding by the rules, and it's usually zero is the number each year. Where accidents happen are in completely different situations, usually excessive speed and no matter what the marking is, it doesn't change. I remember a 14-year-old, Aaron, hopping in a car with a couple of strangers in the front and his cousin and her friend sat in the back, and we went at 130K an hour on a gravel road and then hit a lamppost, and my cousin, who's my best friend, is no longer with us, she was killed that night, and that...
And my cousin, who's my best friend, is no longer with us. She was killed that night and that ruined her parents' lives as well as mine and set me on a, on a goal around trying to reduce, um, uh, road tolls and stuff as we go forward. Uh, which brings me to my next one, uh, when, uh, a few years ago, uh, my mother was coming home from a quiz night that I was hosting up the top end of Marshlands Road, uh, when two guys were racing at beyond a hundred and sixty K an hour and, uh, they clipped each other and then ploughed through the car my mother was in as she was heading home and she was killed. And the guy driving that car was, uh, quite badly injured and still walks with a, a, a bad limp today. So, yeah, I do know the impacts, so when I make decisions around speed, uh, they are ones that come from my head and my heart. And, uh, fifty K an hour or thirty K an hour, if people are abiding by the road rules, the impacts are extremely low. It's the enforcement of people doing excessive speeds, uh, of stealing cars and ploughing into someone on their way to work at the hospital at three AM. Those are what take people's lives on the roads of Christchurch. And, uh, no matter what we set as speed limits, we won't save those lives. Um, so I'll stick with the staff recommendation here. There's also the reputational risk to the council. If we go through one particular process and lead the public down a, a, a road that has essentially a dead end and we have to start again and come up with another outcome, that's not a good look. It's a waste of resource, it's a waste of time, uh, like many have said, let's do it once, let's do it right. And, uh, and we all have members here at the table, so, uh, Mark, kind of in a, in a, in a weird, sad way, we're, we're brothers of the same loss.
Thank you. Andre, please?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, this has always been a contentious, uh, issue and in my travels over the year, I've found that most people want lower speed limits on their streets, but they don't want lower limits on their community anywhere, which makes our life pretty difficult as decision-makers and actually getting a proper idea from the public as to what they want on our streets. Um, I don't believe there is strong public buy-in for blanket thirty K limits. There are mixed views on that. But I do believe there actually is really good consensus on lower speed limits around our schools and our school areas to thirty Ks. I have found in my travels, good consensus on that. I barely found anyone who doesn't support that. Um, I also reckon we've come to a time where there's some reasonable support for forty K limits around residential areas that aren't near schools or on main roads as well. Um, a few years ago, there wouldn't have been that, but I do believe that does exist now. The direction from central government a few years ago was thirty Ks around school areas. Councils chose to go further than the school areas, in some cases much further. Um, what that ended up doing is sort of taking away from the reason that we were telling people it was being done, which was around school areas. What it ended up doing was it rolled the public up, um, and the opposition, they seized on that. They made it a policy to put a stop to all of this thirty K business. Um, safe speeds around schools ideally would have never become a, a political issue. Um, but unfortunately, we've come to a time where that is, is what's happening and that's really unfortunate. Um, and now, and we shouldn't also be getting into a position where the government is promising to or committing to reversing speed limits that councils have decided. We shouldn't have even quite got to that position either. Uh, but it is, in my view, in some ways, council's going further than they had the public mandate for, which has led to those kinds of commitments. Um, the main political parties really should be able to agree on things, uh, like safe speeds around our schools. Um, and I'm saddened that they didn't. They should have done that. We don't want to be changing, uh, these things over and over again. Um, we have heard, uh, from people wanting commitment to hearings panel. I think that's very, very fair. Uh, and that's why I asked for amendments to do exactly that, which is commit to hearings panel by the end of this year as soon as practicable. I, I agree, we need to hear from people. Uh, those hearings need to be meaningful, they need to be informed, they need to be thorough. And it sounds to me like the difference will potentially be a few weeks, that will end up leading to safety improvements that will actually stick. Um, we're all sick of reversing changes, uh, we're, we're sick of changing changes and continued changes to government policy are really challenging. So if we are making changes, we want changes that are going to actually stick. Um, and I believe the public, actually regardless of where they sit, also want us to see changes that stick and not chopping and changing. Uh, that is my view and that is why, that is where I blended today.
Thank you. Um, we haven't heard from you, Yanni. You, you're good? You're good? Um, Tara, you, you're good? Thank you very much. Right, so I dare say the word division will come out of someone's mouth, so before I put this motion. Well, I will put the motion. Um, all those in favour and, um, Katie will, um, do division. Thank you.
So just to be clear on what we're voting on. Yes. Um, all right, this is a division on item five. This is for the staff recommendations as on screen, which means to, um, approve option three, which is to pause the hearings panel. Councillor Moore?
Yes.
Councillor Johansson?
No.
Deputy Mayor? Councillor McClellan? Councillor Barber?
Yes.
Councillor Gough?
Yes.
Councillor McDonald?
Yes.
Councillor Keown?
Yes.
Councillor Fields?
No.
The Mayor?
Yes.
Councillor Skandrit?
Yes.
Councillor Harrison Hunt?
No.
Councillor Coker?
No.
Councillor Templeton?
No.
Councillor Donovan?
No.
Councillor Peters?
Yes.
Councillor Henshaw?
Yes.
Thank you. So that is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we, um, wrap it with a karakia. Thank you very much.